Hello and welcome to another episode of Hames Hot Mic, sponsored again, of course, by Simpson Notaries. After this quick break, I'll be joined by my good friend and hard-working ex-cop, councillor Bud Mercer. Councillor Bud Mercer has been serving the Chilliwack community as a councillor since November 2018. And I think most of us know of Bud's previous career. He was an RCMP officer for some 34 years, and rose to the rank of Assistant Commissioner, and was the Chief Operating Officer for the Vancouver 2010 Olympics. His extensive policing background includes municipal, provincial, federal, and international work. We're going to talk a lot about policing and community safety today, but I'll remind folks that Bud is also a member of the Affordable Housing and Development Advisory Committee. He's Chair of the Chilliwack Parks and Trails Committee, the Design Review Committee, a member of the Regional District Board, the Regional Hospital District Board, the Heritage Advisory Committee, the Integrated Community Safety Task Force. Bud, they've given you a lot to do in your first term as a Member of Council, and I know that you're enjoying it immensely, but today I'd really like to focus on the work that you did with the Mayor's Task Force that was created to look at community safety. I think it was the Integrated Community Safety Task Force. Welcome, and let's chat about that.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
You know, the Task Force was one of the first things, I think, the Mayor established when he was elected in 2018, and I think quite rightly put you with all of your background and experience in community safety and crime in charge. What were your thoughts as you began to develop a process that you went through?
Well, we have to go back in time a little bit. As you know, you and I talked about this probably four years ago plus, that, you know, what does a city like Chilliwack have to do to be that place that everybody wants to live, where they are safe, and just as importantly, where they feel safe? And as we look at that, and we find out the why-nots and the what-ifs, you know, what's the strategy to resolve and fix that, and make it the community that we all want to be a part of? When I was elected, you know, you and I talked about it again, and for those that are listening and who don't know, the original draft of the document was a document that was prepared by yourself, and it did seem a natural fit. You and I presented it to Mayor Popoff. You know, he pushed it forward, and we began the, you know, the heavy lifting on what needed to be done. I think if we go back closer to the beginning of this, there was a real realization that when you ask 10 people on the road or on the street, what do they think about public safety, it all ends up being a police problem. And I know it from my experience, and I know you know it from being a past Mayor and a citizen of Chilliwack, that nothing can be further from the truth. In fact, as council, and the Mayor, and staff are probably tired of hearing me say, when everything goes sideways and the level of governments don't do their job, everything that's bad becomes a police problem. And that's not sustainable, and it's not sustainable from a taxpayers' position, who are paying the full ride for policing in Chilliwack too. It's simply not fair. So we went into this with an open mind, saying that we would look at all the pieces. When we talked about public safety, it's not just policing, it's addiction, it's mental health, it's housing, it's, you know, the chronic offenders on our street, it's probation, it's poverty, it's the upbringing of children, and maybe the pieces that are missing in some of our neighborhoods and in some of our families. So there were so many pieces to this. So we talked about who should belong on a Task Force that would look at all of those, and just those things I mentioned. We shot for the top, we looked for individuals that were fully responsible for some of those areas at the very highest of levels. We had this saying when we went into it, that we didn't really want anybody on the committee that, or on the Task Force rather, that had to go somewhere else to ask for permission before they could talk at a meeting. We wanted the decision-makers at the table. It was about a year, year and a quarter, year to year and a half process to where we are now, maybe almost two. We brought this team together. The first many months were information gathering and getting presentations from all of the pieces, if you will, that have a role to play in public safety. We actually ran tabletop exercises, where we would sit around and walk a person that's, you know, a pretend person, obviously, it's a tabletop, but a person that's addicted to drugs and is asking for help. And we ran that scenario through a tabletop exercise, and looked for how that person would proceed through the system, where were the successes, and where were the challenges, and frankly, where were the failures of an individual that's addicted to drugs, but has reached that point in his life or her life where they're asking for help. We identified where the gaps were and where the failures were. Similarly, for a chronic offender, somebody that's been, you know, a dozen times in a month in front of the police, gone to court, released from court, gone to court, released from court. I think everybody knows the story, the police would probably refer to it as the catch-and-release program. We did a tabletop, where we walked that person, that individual, through a tabletop exercise, and saw how that person fit into the system, and again, where the failures were.
And so I'm sorry, I'm suggesting, or what you're suggesting, is that when those failures began to emerge from that process, did that then form the basis of drafting the resolutions or the recommendations that went into the report?
Absolutely. You know, so once we did this full spectrum analysis of what happens on our streets of Chilliwack, and it's the same across most of our province, that became the information that we created, what we called our Action Plan Moving Forward, and the things that needed to be changed or fixed or integrated in a plan that would make Chilliwack a better place. That plan was presented to council about a month ago, it was approved, fully approved unanimously, and we're in the implementation phase now.
So it sounds like what the plan came up with and what was uncovered was exactly what you said in the beginning, which is that when things are unresolved with individuals, and let's take someone who is perhaps addicted to some sort of controlled substance, and living on the street, or maybe challenged by some sort of mental illness, then if those things are left untreated, invariably, they end up coming into contact with the criminal justice system. Sometimes because they have committed a crime, but other times, I think the report found that often it seemed to be the place of last resort for that individual, whether or not they needed to be involved in the criminal justice system or not.
Yeah, and even perhaps, Clint, not the criminal justice system, just a police response. And let's face it, the police have no business attending what I'll refer to as mental health calls, where people are in trouble, they're in distress, they need help. That's not a police role, but it becomes a police role because other levels of government have not stepped up and provided the resources that are required to actually deal with this situation, and then it becomes a police problem. And sometimes, not always, I think there's more good stories than bads, but sometimes they go sideways.
And did the report uncover what percentage of calls that the RCMP are dealing with in our community are in fact legitimate calls for service to do with a crime being committed versus those kinds of calls that are more mental health calls?
Well, it wouldn't be just mental health calls, but I think the figure that's thrown around is about 55 to 60% of calls that police attend. The average person would look at them and say, "Those are not police calls. There is another agency or provincial body that should be looking after them." And some might ask, "So, well, so what?" Right? But if you look at everything else where people might be concerned or be critical, where police don't have the time to investigate things like theft from vehicles, and people would say, you know, "We just get a file number, and we go to our insurance company." And it's because of that 55 to 50% of work, 60% of work that the police are doing that they shouldn't be doing, that's keeping them away from the stuff they should be doing. And that's part of the problem as well.
And I think the response often from people in the community, if they see an uptick in those kinds of crime, is, "Well, we need more police officers." And it may be, and the report, I think, looked at this a little bit, it may be that we have enough police officers, we may need more, there's no question that could probably be helpful, but we need more people on the street that are filling some of those other roles, more people that can provide an access point for people that are challenged with an addiction or homelessness or a mental illness. Talk about some of the report's recommendations with respect to having more bodies on the street.
So if we look at, you know, and probably the best way to explain it is to look at a scenario. 3 o'clock in the morning, police or someone comes across someone who's down, they've had it, they need for help, they want help, they ask for help, they reach out for help. And think about the police officer or the ambulance driver that comes across that or is called to that. It's hard to believe, but we don't have the resources in place through our provincial body, if you will, through Fraser Health, whatever you want to call it, there's no place really for that person to go. And even when that person finds a place to go, the questions are asked, "Why is that person in the situation they are in? Is it mental health? Is it drug addiction? Are they down on their luck? Anything? Are they sick?" And believe it or not, there's a different person responsible for all of that, depending on what the answer is or what the answer is given. There's no one-stop shopping for that person that's working night shift that comes across that person. There's nowhere to take them, where there's one door. One door where they can go in and ask for help and get help without being shuffled around. We heard stories of people asking for help, going on a waiting list, Surrey, but no real way to get there. How's that possible for a homeless person? No way to get there, but we have some help for you in Surrey. It's just wrong, and we noticed so much of that. And I should point out too, that it wasn't any individual agency, and we've just zeroed in on health, mental health and addiction, it goes across the board, whether it's probation, everything you can think of. Everybody's working hard, but what we found out is there's been very little integration between those agencies. One window for someone to go to and ask for help. Some of these things that need to be done are being done. If a person's down on their luck and they're drug addicted, they've reached the bottom, whether it's substance abuse, or drugs, or alcohol, regardless of what it is, and they've reached the bottom, as far down as they can go, and they ask for help. For that person to ask for help, a couple things have to be lined up. If they have a roof and they have food, they're probably in a better place to ask, reach out and ask for help. And we need to do a better job, which is part of that strategy, of finding that one door for them to go through where there's a wraparound service to get them over the line. The other thing that I have to point out, as we think of our dear friend, Mr. Choka, who left us, continually we talked about, what does an early childhood look like that would lead a person to be in the place they're at when they're homelessness, drug addicted, a criminal? And we had so much work done on that side, and so many experts come in and talk to us, and it's very predictable. And as the saying goes, "If it's predictable, it's avoidable." And the plan does a lot about the long-term strategy, about what are children missing that fill one of those pre-indicators that there's a good chance they're going to get themselves in trouble. So that very much is part of the long-term strategy of this plan as well.
So the plan also, I think, recognizes there are some things that are present in other communities that are working extremely well, that so far aren't present in our community, and yet we seem to have as big or even bigger a need for those things in our community. Can you explain some of those things? I think there's a CAR67 is a project that I think goes on in Surrey, that people have talked about here. There's an ACT team, that these teams exist in other communities. Can you talk about those two things and how they would make a difference in the community?
Absolutely. You know, we all watch the news and we watch some of the bad outcomes when police are involved in some of these welfare checks, with the grant check, the welfare of an individual, or there's a report of somebody that is in some kind of emotional distress, and we see them on the news. But, you know, I'm going to qualify it by saying that the police across our country do thousands of those, and they work out perfectly, but we hear about the ones obviously that don't. But in other communities, the provincial government has actually funded what are referred to as mental health caseworkers, who actually work shift work, driving in the passenger seat with a police officer in a police vehicle. And that's the vehicle that's dispatched to these type of calls for service. So it's not a policeman, it's somebody that's a professionally trained person who works in this area, that's with the policeman, that is handling the call, of course, with the backup of the police officer where necessary. We have not been able to get that here in Chilliwack. Our request for these health workers to be riding with our police officers falls on deaf ears. We've had no success whatsoever. The other thing is, you pointed out, Clint, are called ACT teams. And these ACT teams actually work around the clock, there's not just one. And they are the teams that are dispatched with the police when they get a call of a person that's in distress, roadside, or in a home, or in an apartment, or wherever they are. They attend with the police, so it's not the untrained law enforcement officer that's probably, and as I know, better trained to be doing something else than to be doing this. They're on the street to respond to this call. And I don't think people realize the number of hours that the police officers are paying for, sit in the Chilliwack General Hospital, guarding or supervising someone that's been brought in that needs mental health, mental health work, needs to see a psychiatrist, needs to see a psychiatric nurse, needs help. Our police officers, I've heard stories of seven, eight, nine hours, where your tax dollars are sitting in a chair in the uniform of a police officer, sitting in the chair, waiting for these people to see a doctor or see somebody that can help them. These are things that the province needs to pay for. We have a high overdose rate, we have extremely high numbers of these type of calls in Chilliwack, and it's just not a police job, it's taking them away from the other things that we want them to do, like the foot patrols, like school patrols, like the positive engagement with youth. It's keeping them away from all this, doing things that they're probably not best to be doing.
And I think the report, from my reading of it, outlines some of the solutions and who's responsible for those, and it was good to see that there was significant involvement from those provincial agencies, and I think they've bought into the report, and I think the recommendations are certainly clear, and hopefully they will stimulate some activity. I'm going to just take a quick break, and we're going to be right back with more from councillor Bud Mercer, talking about the Integrated Community Safety Plan that has just recently been adopted by council. Welcome back, everyone. My guest today is councillor Bud Mercer, and we're talking about the Integrated Community Safety Plan, recently adopted by city council. And we were just having a discussion about some of the challenges that police have in working with other agencies, doing work that may perhaps not be their first choice of work to do. I think, Bud, when we look at the makeup of that committee, it was pretty clear that those folks were them themselves, they were interested in trying to resolve those issues as well. The committee was made up of people who recognize those issues from their perspective as well, correct?
Yeah, and, you know, just to be clear, we're not picking on these individuals, these decision-makers and individuals were actually part of our Task Force, from Fraser Health, from mental health, from drug addiction, from housing. These are all outstanding and wonderful people that took part over this year and a half, all the tabletop exercise. They understand the shortcomings too, and they're not the ones that are holding the money strings to create these positions and have them in Chilliwack. But we're going to continue working with them and working with all levels of government as part of this action plan to lobby the government. When you look at what the next steps are, this plan is passed, we look to start operationalizing it, well, actually, we already have. Many things are being worked on as we speak, and we do have results, and significant results. But when we look at the governance committee now, that will take charge of this action plan, beginning in September, and see through the execution of it, so that it gets done and doesn't sit on a desk, these are very senior people. Our very own MLA Kelly Padden is on the governance committee. The list goes on and on and on of the very senior people that are on this governance board. We have representation from the Solicitor General's office that's on it, from Victoria. So there's a lot of interest in this plan. You know, what was interesting when we started this, if I go right back to the very beginning, we hired consultants from a company in Ontario, and what we quickly became aware of is some provinces in Canada, Ontario especially, cities and communities have been legislated to create this type of plan that we're now working on and ready to start executing. So there's a lot of interest in what we're doing. The province puts some money behind it as well, because they were interested in where we're going with this plan and what the outcomes are, to see if there's a fit in other cities and communities across the country, or across the province. But in that, I have had people from other communities in Alberta sit in on our public safety committees and get briefings on the type of things we're doing in Chilliwack. So there's a lot of interest. We just have to keep the pedal to the floor here, keep the gas on it, and make sure we keep moving forward with it.
I think one of the things that was shared throughout the process was the fact that there is a sense of safety in a community, and then there's the actual crime that's happening in a community. And when you're dealing with issues like mental health challenges or addictions, when you're dealing with homelessness, there's often a perception in the community that those things are all illegal, because it's often when those things aren't dealt with, crime can be a result of those things being left outstanding. And I think that's one of the things in reading the report that was really clear to me, is understanding when things are simply a safety issue, and mostly an individual's safety, and when things actually sort of fall into the area of crime and crime reduction. I think the report did a nice job of detailing where those lines are, and I hope that people will take the opportunity to read that. The one piece that we haven't quite talked about, and I think it's important to talk about, is the justice system. I think there's a feeling, as you mentioned, that sometimes with prolific offenders, we feel like there might be a bit of a catch-and-release program, where offenders are charged, they go before a judge, they're let go, they commit more crimes, they go before a judge, and they're let go. What did the report and the investigative work the committee did, what did it uncover in terms of what needs to happen in that particular realm?
So first of all, you're right. You know, we go back probably midway through this process, we did a survey that went out through the city of Chilliwack, and our communications staff at the city tell me that the response rate to the survey was higher than they've ever seen on anything else that has ever been released by the city in the form of a survey. And it was clear that there's a real distinction between people actually being unsafe and people feeling they're unsafe. And not that, and before I get the letters, I'm not suggesting either one of those is not important, because if you don't feel safe, that's your reality. But there was so much to unpackage in that discussion as to why that was, and so much misinformation, and so much, I guess, feeling of things that aren't being done that should be done. And, you know, whether it's the communication from the police, whether it's that prolific offender that you're talking about, Clint, like, how is it possible? You know, and we were told stories about people coming in from Alberta, three in a stolen vehicle from Alberta, getting in a pursuit with the police, being arrested, taken to jail, taken to court, being released, and then within 24 hours stealing another car in Chilliwack, being located out in Boston Bar and Yale, another interaction with police, where they're arrested, brought back before the court, ones, I think, one was kept in custody, and two were released again. Like, on what planet is that okay? But when you peel back that onion, when we did the tabletop to try and figure out what's going on, what was very clear to us, and I go back to my time, when I was a watch commander here in 1997, 98, I came back in charge as an inspector in 2002, I think. I was superintendent here up till 2006, in charge of the Fraser Valley. And I can tell you that during my time, the number of prosecutors that provincial Crown had at the provincial prosecution office here in Chilliwack was the same then as it is today. Yet the number of police officers have doubled, sometimes more than 100%. The number of cases they're handling has more than doubled, which means just by extension that the more Crown Council reports on reported crime and people that are in custody, and the reports are done and sent to Crown Council for charge approval, they're going to the same number of people. They don't have the capacity, they don't have anywhere near the capacity to actually charge and follow through in court with the amount of work that's coming at them. That's wrong. Like, how can that be? What are we talking here, 23 years, 24 years? And policing has doubled across the Fraser Valley, and there's no more Crown Council people actually handling these court cases that they come? And what's the only thing they can do? Maybe not charge, maybe defer them to other programs? They just don't have the time to prosecute. I know I'm oversimplifying a much larger problem, but there's nothing better than the truth.
And to say nothing of the fact that I don't believe there's any more judges sitting today than there were. So there is a pretty significant backlog, so I think we're all looking for alternatives to the current justice system. There is restorative justice, which I believe is mentioned in the report as well, as something that needs to be encouraged until we deal with this capacity issue.
Yeah, and I just want to go back a little bit, let people know. When it comes to prolific offenders, what the city has done over the years is they have funded RCMP officers, that at that time Superintendent Massey, who's just retired, had come to council looking for. And these were dedicated teams that actually targeted prolific offenders. So when prolific and chronic offenders came to their attention through crime analysis, that it was the same individual that's over and over and over again arrested, going before the court system, there was not a workaround, but an arrangement with Crown that they would be highlighted, these target teams would target these individuals that they knew were going to offend, they would be arrested, and they were, as I understand it, treated a little bit differently as a priority when they reached the court system, but there's still so many that are falling between the cracks.
It seems like in every area that's looked at here, whether it's mental health services, homelessness services, addiction services, Crown Council, RCMP services, we're coming from behind on some of these issues. And I want to go back to something you said early on, the work of Mike Choka and what he's done in this community to highlight the need to make sure we have programs that provide kind of earlier intervention. I think everything that was looked at in that report pointed to the fact that the more investment we can make upfront in making sure kids have healthy starts in their lives, the better off we're all going to be. So I was pleased to see that make it into the report as well.
Yeah, you know, you're absolutely right. Mike was, and his family, I've known them forever, he was a joy to have at the table as part of this Task Force. He is missed, and he'll always be missed, but you're absolutely right. You know, if our kids get a fair shake and a fair start, the percentages of those that take that bad turn in the road will be far less.
Absolutely. My thanks to you, Bud. My thanks to you, Bud, for making some time to come and speak with me and my audience today. This is really important work, and I hope that folks will take the chance to look up the report. I believe it's online, now you can get it on the city's website. Have a look at the work that this committee has done, because I think it's pretty impressive work. And hopefully, we'll get a chance, Bud, to have you back as the governance committee continues to work, and to make sure that these recommendations are followed through on. Thank you so much to my guest, Bud Mercer. This is another episode of Hames Hot Mic, sponsored, of course, by Simpson Notaries. Thanks so much.